I'd like to call the meeting to order if we can stand and say a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. I first want to just thank the public for coming out to vote. Since our last meeting, we had our budget vote, had a very successful eighty-some percent, eighty-four percent passage, so thank you very much for that. Our two incoming board members were also re-elected, so thank you. We do not have any visitors wishing to speak nor any written communication. We do have a few board committee reports that we'll go through, so we can start with the tech committee.
The tech committee met the day after our last board meeting. We discussed the Triple E technology integration, which we've talked about here before. The plan to roll out to the faculty and to the buildings was discussed. And the new computer science and digital literacy public comment period will be August-October, with tentative release in December. There was some discussion about keyboarding and how to implement that next year, whether you make it a separate thing or it's integrated into the classroom. And then Ed Law 2D Part 121, which deals with student data privacy, is being reviewed by the state. And we will, our immediate need is to name someone to be in charge of that by December. That's the short version.
Great, thank you. Ms. McGlaughlin on transportation?
Yes, thank you. We met as a transportation committee on May 13th. We had two things that we reviewed during that meeting. The first was, as we promised, we reviewed again the FirstView application and also the database that they use in the administrative offices. And we determined, just basically bottom line, it's not ready. We don't want to roll it out to the public yet, so we are going to continue to review the FirstView app and we will definitely record back after June 2020. We'll continue to use the dashboard and FirstView through the next school year, just to see if anything changes. The second thing that we discussed in the meeting was that we were contacted by a company called Bus Patrol. They actually contacted the town of Amherst Supervisor Culpa and also Police Chief Askew in Amherst, as well as our neighboring districts of Sweet Home and Williamsville. So what Bus Patrol is, it's a private company that would work to eliminate the issues of cars passing buses and, you know, which obviously proves to be a very huge safety hazard. They want to do a pilot program, which we have decided to go ahead with. And they would work closely with the police department and we will report out on how that pilot program goes after we have our next meeting. And we will probably meet through the, probably the end of the summer. And that's it. Any questions? Yes.
All right, I believe we have an audit report.
Yeah, the audit committee met with Womston and Kornick. And Mrs. Bezinski reported out to us that we're making some progress on our extracurricular clubs. It's been a little while, but it's still a work in progress, but we are making progress. Also, we'll be meeting again on June 13th. Womston, Kornick, our internal auditor, is going to be in and running some testing on our accounts payable and our credit card procedures. And we will get the results on the 13th and report it up when we're done.
Great, thank you. With that, we'll turn over your super case report.
Thank you. Pleased to welcome Mr. Pidgen and the Pathfinder's Task Force with our Students' Teacher of the Month. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. It's always a great opportunity. We're really eager to shine a spotlight on the great students at Amherst High School, as well as our wonderful staff. It's been a great year for the Task Force. We really identified some wonderful, wonderful students and we're really eager to highlight them today. So let's go ahead and get started. Aiden Clemente. Aiden Clemente was nominated as Student of the Month by the Pathfinders, Mr. Bauer, Ms. King, and Mr. Contro. Mr. Bauer states that in AP Chemistry, Aiden has demonstrated his great attention to details. His answers are always extremely well-written and very easy to read. His work ethic is second to none. His peers recognize all of this and enjoy working in his group as they know he will help them make them successful. Ms. King states that Aiden is an excellent math student in both college pre-calculus honors and AP Statistics. He works incredibly hard and challenges himself to do his very best every day. Aiden is polite, works great with his peers, and is a well-rounded student. He really seems to have mastered the act of balancing it all. Mr. Contro states that Aiden is an awesome student. He is one of the most outstanding trombones that he has worked with in the band era here at Amherst. He has earned a perfect mark of 100 last week on his NISMAllstate solo, which is a huge achievement in itself. But Aiden prepared that solo all on his own without the help of private lessons as well. Aiden is very organized, prepared, always takes the time to communicate when he needs something. Additionally, Aiden is an outstanding basketball player, playing on the varsity level for the past two years. This winter, knowing that we're short on experienced trombone players for the musical, he found a way to play with the pit orchestra as well and make all of his commitments to the varsity basketball team at the same time. Congratulations to Aiden for being chosen as April Student of the Month. Ani Grimmon. Ani Grimmon was nominated as Student of the Month by Mr. Contro and Ms. Moranto. Mr. Contro states that Ani has a very impressive list of accomplishments. She is band president, first chair for the ECME Senior High Band, and she is the number-one chair in NISMAll Conference Wind Ensemble as well. Ms. Moranto states that Ani is the vice president of the French Club and brings a lot of enthusiasm to any club meeting and function. In college French IV, she shows how a natural ability to speak the language and expresses herself concerning many different topics, from French history, general culture, literature, and current events. As a teacher, I feel very lucky to have her in class. Mr. Parmitlaj states that she is a gifted clarinetist. Ani represented Amherst at the NAFME National Association for Music Education All Eastern Conference in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania recently, and she's a member of Concert Corral and a featured dancer in our operetta. Congratulations to Ani for being chosen as one of April's Student of the Month. Timothy Morris was nominated by one of his friends and as well as the Pathfinders, Parker Elbeasy, who is also a Pathfinder. Parker states that Tim stands out as one of the most responsible workers in our 2019 class. Tim will always have his work done at least a couple days before the due date. As a result, Tim often checks his worth with teachers and other classmates to ensure that he understands every concept. Some memories of Parker has of Tim's actions are his helpful tips on numerous difficult projects. Tim has helped him in a multitude of ways with classes like physics, AP Physics, AP Literature, and AP Calculus. Specifically, AP Lit, Tim and Parker discuss essay topics and they bounce ideas off each other. With Tim's simple help, he often excels in his classes. He believes Tim's action deserves to be recognized for the effects it's had on his life and many other classmates. Because high school can bring sometimes an isolated feeling of being alone, but someone like Tim around in high school, suddenly it becomes easier. On top of Tim's impressive academic responsibility, his own teammates, like Will Stewart, have noted his proper etiquette on the court. So I'm assuming it's the golf course? Yes. Tim's academic plate is topped by his involvement with community and working outside of school. Tim has Parker's respect for being able to add to his plate, add this to his plate, as well as continuing to challenge himself. However, Tim is noble about these classes and often underplays their difficulty. Parker has no doubt that Tim is a force to reckon with next fall when he takes the next step in his education. He personally looks up to Tim as a friend and as an exemplary student. Congratulations to Tim for being chosen as May's Student of the Month.
Congratulations, Tim.
Ms. Stephanie Redine was nominated as Teacher of the Month by the Pathfinders and Mr. Hare. Mr. Hare states that Ms. Redine is by far one of the most ambitious and qualified teachers he has ever worked with. She takes her career very seriously and is always looking for ways to learn more, improve, and become a better teacher, which is hard because she's already one of the best. She is one of the very few teachers who are pursuing her doctoral degree and has almost completed her studies. This upcoming year, Ms. Redine will be finalizing research involving her own, her pre-calculus classes at the high school, which is the basis of her dissertation. She was also selected as a New York State Master Teacher and regularly attends conferences as training on the latest strategies in educational research. She is also co-advisor of our math club at the high school and has been very innovative in increasing student participation. Mr. Hare teaches geometry with her and is always looking for her and looking for new ways to improve and enhance the educational experience for our students. She never accepts the status quo and strives to implement the latest educational research and strategies in everything we do at Amherst. Mr. Hare himself is a better teacher for having worked with Ms. Redine. He cannot think of a more qualified teacher for Student of the Month. Congratulations to Ms. Redine for being chosen as May's Teacher of the Month. Raylene Richacho was also nominated, but she has her across banquet tonight. And Mr. Geisler was also nominated, but he had another prior commitment. So that's our presentation and thank you as always and thank you for your here.
Thank you very much. Thank you to all of our students and your families. I always say this, but I truly mean it. Good kids don't just happen. They come from loving, supporting families. So parents, you should be very proud of what your kids are accomplishing and thank you for all the hard work you put in with them because we definitely benefit from that here at school by getting to work with them. Congratulations. Moving on, we have our architects here, Young &amp; Wright, as well as our construction management company of Turner Construction. If you've been near the high school lately, you've probably noticed that there's some additional fencing, some areas have been blocked off. The music wing has been evacuated. So I thought this was a good opportunity to give you a little bit of an update on where we are with capital construction since spring break, which is really when we started.
All right. Quickly, maybe I'll just. I'm Jim Pecky with Young &amp; Wright. We've seen each other quite a bit, but I want to introduce Rashawn Sanubi. He's taking over as project manager from Jackie Dapowski, which many of you have met. So just wanted to introduce Rashawn quickly before we start. So turn it over to you.
All right, so this April, we began our Phase Two portion of the capital improvement project. And we would like to give you a construction update, let you know how things have been going in the field. And both Turner and Young &amp; Wright will run you through that. So just a general look at what we've been working on in the last two weeks. Some of the major items that you'll notice if you go, the music wing portion of the high school has been shut down. So at this point, we have demolition, for the most part, wrapped up throughout there. Abatement of the flooring has been completed, as well as window removal, just within that area. Coming this summer, there'll be additional window removal at both the high school and middle school. So current activity is going on right now. Our electricians are working on installing their rough-in, their conduits for all the new work. We have drywall getting installed, as well as one of the major portions of construction is removing a current floor slab and installing a new one. So that's the major portion of construction that's going on currently, if you were to walk through that space. I'll take you through where we started and how we got to where we are now. So beginning in April during spring break, we started off by excavating on your left-hand side an areaway. And this was an opening through the foundation wall of the music wing so that we were able to access the crawl space. This allowed us to do demolition down there, as well as complete abatement in that area so that contractors could safely work underneath. Moving on to the right-hand side, some of these pictures are a little difficult to see here, but you're looking at Room 608, which is the band room. And we're removing portions of the walls within here to open up and make the classroom larger. On the left-hand side of this next slide, this is Room 602. So in here again, abatement has occurred. We have removed the risers and the flooring. And we've been also removing the walls because of the reconfiguration of this space that you'll see further on. On the right-hand side, in the, on the third floor of the corridor in the high school, we began removing lockers. All lockers throughout the entire building will be removed throughout this summer. So this was just a jumpstart on that while kids were out for spring break. These were empty lockers that haven't been utilized in a while. On the left-hand side, there are two pictures, a little difficult to tell, but this is what the crawl space looks like underneath Room 602. So we had to build a new foundation wall, which is on the right-hand side of that picture. And that's a new wall there. So that wall will not support the new slab that will be installed. So we're going to be dropping a portion of the floor in 602 to create a bigger space within there for the students and teachers for storage purposes and teaching as well. And then on the right-hand side, a little dark to see, but this is also your crawl space. This is new water lines getting installed for the sinks that are being placed in each room within the music wing. That's going to help with cleaning equipment and one of the requests from the district and teachers. So I know that's really looking forward, teachers are really looking forward to having that now. On the left-hand side in this picture, this is a part of the corridor within the music wing. This is where doors were removed, where infilling those spaces and actually creating more offices and storage spaces where there was really a dead-end corridor at that, you know, prior to this work that we started. On the right-hand side, this is now coming into the last week or so. We began installing studs for the drywall. So you can see, this is Room 608. So this is the room that really is taking the most shape at this point. And we're moving further down the corridor throughout the course of this spring and into summer. And on the next slide here. Oh, sorry. Thank you. On the left-hand side, again, 602. This is where your slab is getting dropped. So this is just another progress photo showing you the duck hangers that are coming down from the ceiling. So on the right-hand side, you can see there's a run of duck along the wall. There's studs that are along the right-hand side there as well. So all these rooms are transforming and taking shape. It's a slow process with some of the activities that we first began with, for instance, abatement. But as we, this will look like a completely new space in the next month from where it is now. It'll transform very quickly. In these two pictures here, drywall's starting to go up in these spaces. So like I said, they're going to transform. We're going to see ceilings up soon after all the MEP equipment has been installed in the ceiling. So that's coming up in the next few weeks. And on that one here.
Basically, what we wanted to do is just give you a reminder of sort of the end goal and the images that we've created throughout the process to kind of, you know, move forward and what you can expect, you know, as they complete the project. Also, before I get into the slides, I wanted to kind of point you over to the finish board off to the side here. These are the actual materials, you know, working with the district and with our interiors design team, coming up as far as, you know, paints, materials, wall materials, cabinetry, floor tile, those types of things. Try to, those are the actual finishes that were selected as part of this project that will be incorporated into each of those spaces that we're talking about. So we just wanted at least let you see that. We're keeping that in Turner's office so that they can kind of keep track with the contractors to make sure that what we planned on and what we proposed is actually what we're getting out in the field to make sure that we're having that quality control aspect to it. So back to the slides. What you can see here is part of our project. We're going to be starting to renovate the corridors, including the renovation and the replacement of the lockers. We want to go through and kind of give that a very fresh, clean look, especially since that's sort of one of the first spaces that we've seen when it's coming, when visitors come into the district, is that corridor space. So we want to get the terrazzo floor, which is in great condition, get that down to its original condition. So we're going to be grinding down the floors and bringing back the original, you know, aspect and colors of that material and then giving, you know, new finishes, new lockers throughout that space, including new ceilings and lights to kind of brighten that entire space up a little bit more. Here, this is just a kind of a three-dimensional plan of the three music spaces. To the left is the chorus room and then band in the center and then your orchestra space on the right-hand side. Kind of give you sort of an idea of what the flooring will look like, sort of the cabinetry along the outside edge of it, and then also the furniture layout that we've been talking with, you know, with the end users of how they can see, you know, the students using this space. You know, some of them, as Brittany had mentioned, some of the spaces are getting a little bit larger, sort of people to fit a little bit better, you know, more conducive to how they're using the instructional space. So this is just kind of a quick plan to remind you as far as the renovating areas.
One of the things I'd like to highlight there, if you go back, those spaces in between each of the rooms, there'll be some office space, which is in most cases very small, but those areas represent either small group or individual practice spaces. And in some cases, they're outfitted with professional recording capabilities or technology that will allow the teacher to provide feedback digitally to the kids after they record themselves. So not only is the space going to be renovated in terms of how it looks, it's going to be pretty state-of-the-art in terms of our students' ability to record, perform, receive feedback.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's an excellent point. Moving forward, again, just wanted to give you some images, some reminders as far as what the end product would look like. Here, we're in the band room, which is the center space, kind of opening it up a little bit more, providing a teaching wall, improving the acoustics, improving the finishes, and then providing more space as far as, you know, how the teaching and the instruction actually occurs in that area. Here is the choral room. For anyone that's been in the existing chorus room, there's built-in risers. Kind of limits how you can use that space. So what we ended up doing and part of what Brittany was talking about is we removed those risers. We lowered a certain portion of the floor to provide a little bit more space, but also making it more flexible so the instruction can be differently, whether it's individuals that are, you know, recording themselves or if it's the large group instruction where we could include the risers in there so that everybody's being able to use that space, but providing a little bit more flexibility of that space so that the instruction can be sort of adapted to what the teacher wants to do with that specific group of individuals. Again, improving the acoustics with some wall treatments and improving the finishes overall in the teaching space. And then the last moment that we have here is the orchestra space. Again, trying to provide a little bit more room, a little bit more efficient use of the space. You're improving the teaching wall, but then providing it so that the entire group can perform. You're improving the storage, adding cabinetry, adding, you know, music-specific storage, like wanger units to the outside perimeter so that all of the instruments are being stored properly, safely, and securely. But then also providing some flexibility within the space so that the instruction can be used and recording capabilities for that space as well. So it's really just kind of giving you a reminder and a highlight of, you know, where we're planning on going and, as Brittany said, sort of the progress that we've made so far with construction, which is going fantastically, so.
We were fortunate to have music teachers that were flexible enough to vacate their rooms as of spring break to allow us to get a jump on construction. So they've been in the odd or even the sportsplex with the orchestra and the multipurpose rooms having been relocated. So I'm thankful for their flexibility because as you know, you know, July and August is the busy season for construction and then it's always a race to be prepared for the kids to come back in late August, early September. So in addition to the work that you've just seen here, we also have the parking lot that's being paved out here and windows in both the middle school and high school that will also be replaced. So the idea was to show you the progress that's been made so far, what the end product could look like. And then the next time, we'll be able to actually walk through the spaces in late August as we typically do for our back-to-school building visits. And while this is all ongoing, Young &amp; Wright and Mr. Rampado, Mrs. Bezinski, myself, and Turner are busy continuing to plan Phase Three because, as you know, there's three phases to this project. So that is still happening behind the scenes and we're reading weekly to make sure that those plans are getting finalized to keep the project on target.
Correct. We are in the process of being reviewed by SED right now, but we're still working, you know, while they're going through their review and while we're in the queue to make sure that we're, you know, finishing, getting the idea as far as, you know, something similar to the finish board over there is to understand, you know, what is the end look going to be like while they're looking at the technical aspect of it. So hopefully we'll get SED approval soon and start to plan the bidding in this fall and, you know, start the process again for Phase Three.
Yeah, so Phase Two and Three will play out concurrently starting next summer. So obviously, this summer is Phase Two. Next summer, we'll still be doing some Phase Two work, specifically windows in the middle in high school. And then the following summer of '21, we'll also be finishing the window work in both of those buildings. And so Phase, as of next year and the following year, Phase Two and Three will be running concurrently. But we extended the window project mostly just because of the fact that we really didn't have the labor force to replace all the windows in the middle school and the high school, all in one summer or two summers even, because the buildings are so large. So that will be an exciting time. And just as a reminder, for Phase Three, it's pretty much the basement of the high school. Kitchen, cafeteria, home and careers, art, technology rooms. Some very exciting plans have been drawn up for those spaces to really help us innovate our curriculum and offer our students some great opportunities.
Any questions for us?
Not for you, but I have a question. This is pretty substantial capital improvement. When was the most recent one in the past at this school? All the schools?
Oh. We had a 2012 project that was, how was it?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three million.
Okay.
And that focused mostly on the elementary schools.
Okay.
They got new windows, roofs. The high school had brick repointing.
Okay.
And then this one was voted on, we call it the 2016 project because that's when it was voted on. And of the 30 million, approximately 20 of it is at the high school.
Okay.
So yeah, there's, there's always, when the buildings get to a certain age, they, and the high school was built in 1930. They really, if you don't keep them up to date, they can get away from you quickly in terms of their needs. So it definitely came at the right time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm pleased to welcome Richard Foley, our internal claims auditor, for his annual claims auditor report. Pleased to be here.
Thank you very much and good evening, board members. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. Tonight, I'm going to give a presentation, an annual presentation regarding the role of the claims auditor, what I do, what I look at, what I look for when I examine the claims of the district, and the summary of the past 12 months. So why do we have a claims auditor? You have an external auditor, you have an internal auditor. Why do you have a claims auditor? Well, back in, education law was enacted in 2005 requiring that all claims of the school district be audited. And there was one district downstate that embezzled over $10 million from the school district, an affluent district downstate on Long Island. And the first tip-off that there was something wrong going on in that district came from a Home Depot employee who noticed that the district was purchasing home furnishings, like kitchen cabinets and appliances, and they were being delivered to a residence rather than school district property. So that's what started the whole thing. So New York State determined that this can't happen. So they audited all districts in the next five years, from 2005 to 2010, something like that. And then they enacted this law, requiring all claims to be audited. So that's the background on it. What is a claim? A claim is a document. Normally, it's an invoice from a vendor, outside vendor, or a check request from an employee of the district requesting reimbursement of funds, which prompting a payment for goods and services that were provided. And the claims auditor examines all claims prior to payment to verify the accuracy and that claims are valid based on proper authorization and supporting documentation. A claims auditor works independently of the district's operations to avoid a potential conflict of interest. To avoid a potential conflict of interest, claims auditor cannot be directly involved in the accounting or purchasing functions of a school district. And basically, claims auditor adds another layer of protection of the district's financial resources and helps ensures that tax dollars are spent efficiently. And I want to talk about the purchase order. Purchase order is an important supporting document that I examine with each claim. It's the initial document that's used to request and authorize the purchase of goods and services. And it also confirms that there are adequate funds available in the budget expense code before the purchase is approved. And if there's insufficient funds in the expense code, funds will need to be transferred from some other account into the account where the purchase will be made from. And the purchase orders are all tied into your electronic computerized software financial system called WinCap. And the purchase orders are in sequential numerical order. Each one includes a description and the cost of the items to be purchased and the expense code that will be encumbered. Okay, I'm going to go through the checklist of the things that I look for in each claim. Each claim should have proper supporting documentation, such as the original invoice and the purchase order. It should have a description of the goods and services on the purchase order. And that whatever's on the purchase order should agree with the vendor invoice. The purchase order should be prepared before the invoice date, not after. Sometimes if there's an emergency situation, and I'll say maintenance department has to repair something very quickly, they don't want to delay, so they purchase something ahead of time and they do the purchase order afterwards. There's nothing you can do about that. Emergencies happen. I verify the mathematical accuracy of invoices, make sure that there's no sales tax included, because school districts are tax exempt. There should be a signed documentation confirming that the goods were actually received, such as a packing slip sign with purchase order. There's a section on the bottom of the purchase order where the purchaser should sign that they received the items. Claims, a claim should meet legal competitive bidding requirements according to the New York State general municipal law. So if there's any purchase of materials or equipment that exceeds $20,000, or any construction project that exceeds $35,000, it's required by law to go out to bid for those purchases. I want to ensure that expenditures comply with board policies, that an employee goes on a conference outside of the district, that the correct mileage rate is used for reimbursement for mileage, and the correct meal rates are being followed according to the IRS regulations. Oops. I verify that checks are issued in sequential order. The beginning check number of a check run should be sequential to the last check number of the previous check run. If it's not in order, that's a tip-off that it was a check cut that may or may not have, that should not, may not be in order. So I would look at that very carefully, if there's not sequential check numbers. The checks issued should agree with the audited payment schedule. So after the checks are run, first I audit the payments. The accounts payable clerk cuts the checks and prepares a computerized check run. So I compare the check run with the schedule of audited payments and make sure they agree, so that no other checks could be cut. And once a month, I prepare a monthly report of findings that is included in your board packet. And this contains the warrant or check register report, which contains the payee's name, check number, date, and amount, budget account code. And then if everything looks good, I sign the certification form on the last page. Okay, for the 12 months ending May 31st, 2019, it's basically three ways that vendors can be paid by the school district. Regular checks, electronic transfers, and credit card payments. And I prepare a schedule detailing how many checks were issued, how many electronic transfers there were, credit card purchases. So by far, the checks are the most common, the one amounting to 16 million. Electronic transfers, there were 65, but they're usually large amounts, and then a total of 4 million. And those are usually for interest and principal on the bonds, debt payments. There's also electronic transfers to the New York State retirement system payments, DUNTO, and the financial institution that handles your 403B, deferred tax, deferred payments for your employees. So those are always very large payments. And Visa card payments are 53 purchases totaling only $49,000. So those are very small purchases, and those are usually for registration fees for conferences, workshops, small purchases made online, hotel reservations, and meals. Credit cards are kept in a secure locked location in the business office, and are used only by authorized staff on a limited basis. A log is kept for each credit card that is issued. So there's tight controls on those credit cards. Okay, and in conclusion, purchasing policies and procedures are generally being followed. The only thing I want to say to that is occasionally, there are some purchase orders that are issued after the invoice date. Every district is going to have those. It's only 1% by my calculation that it happens. Couple of typos I found where the wrong number was entered in the computer. Five was recorded as an eight, things like that. Occasionally, I found invoice was not entered. Sometimes you get a pack of five invoices or receipts all at once, and maybe there were five invoices together. Only four of them got recorded, because it's just a clerical thing. Okay, so there's no misappropriation of funds found. And I want to commend the district office staff. I always get excellent cooperation and support from the district office staff. It's much appreciated. You have very good people in your business office, I must say. And whenever I request information, they always follow up immediately and provide it to me. So I appreciate that. Are there any questions or comments? Exciting stuff, isn't it?
I just want to say that, you know, for those who don't know, Mr. Foley is only with us one day a week.
Correct.
And he has a tremendous amount of work to do, and he does it in a short period of time. And I appreciate the fact that, you know, everything is in compliance and that where things may not be, oftentimes it's addressed. So that if there is a problem proactively, if you see something, you mention it to the appropriate people, and we're able to get out ahead of it.
Right.
And we're not waiting until, you know, an annual report or something. So I do appreciate the work that you're doing, and I realize that you do a lot in the little amount of time that you're here. There's not a lot of downtime for the day a week that is here, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
That concludes the superintendent's report.
All right. We will need a motion for new business items.
Motion for new business items E1, A through H, 2, A through D, 3, B, C, D, E, and H.
Wait a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of new business items E1, A through H, 2, A through D, and 3, B through E and H, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. With that, I'd like to welcome some new team members to the fold here. Ms. Amanda Farren, welcome to Amherst School District. Emily Bowton?
Bowton.
Bowton, I'm sorry. Welcome. And Ryan Friedrich?
You're good.
All right, great. I'd also like to take the opportunity to welcome Mr. Jeffrey Wheaton, our new athletic and health director. We did appoint him at the last meeting, but he came this meeting, so welcome to you and your family. I see you had your wife and kids here.
Yeah, my wife Amanda, she's out there running the chicken run with somewhere. My son Cade and daughter, Penelope, so thank you very much.
Thank you. I know you've been in district a few days already here.
I have. I was able to spend a few days with Dr. Ilg, and I'm planning on a few more days this month as well.
Did Dr. Ilg pass on some of the gear to you already? You're about the same size.
We're about the same size, yeah.
Well, welcome. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, yeah.
We look forward to working with you. And welcome to you guys, too. With that, do we have any follow-up action items?
I do not.
All right. We will just need a motion to convene to executive session.
I'll make a motion to convene to executive session to discuss the employment of particular individuals.
Wait a second. Is that you? Okay, Mrs. Aronson. All those in favor of convening to executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 6-0. Thank you, everybody, for coming.